Call the meeting, or would you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Greetings, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the January seventeenth City Council Meeting. Announcements, we do have service awards for twenty years. We're ready. Chief?
Thank you, Council, thank you, Mayor, for having me. Can I get Detective Dean Muha and Matt Runo to come forward? They both have speeches tonight.
Everybody gets three minutes.
Right, right. You know, first and foremost, not to take too much of the time up tonight, but it's an honor to come in, recognize twenty years of law enforcement to the city, to the city of Fishers. First, I'm going to talk about Detective Dean Muha, who came to us in two thousand and three. He initially served in our Patrol Division for some time, and got involved in other aspects of the department. And one of the areas he went into was our detective unit. Once a detective, he became our only certified fraud examiner for the agency, taking most of our high-profile cases that come to us in the city that are fraud-related. He's also serves on the hostage negotiation team as well, and he was Officer of the Year in two thousand and seventeen. He single-handedly has led and organized our Pack the Cruiser for the last seven years for this community, and I don't, that's countless youth that he's helped to feed and led that endeavor for the city of Fishers. So, Dean, thank you for your service, your dedication and protection of this community for twenty years. Thanks. To his right is Officer Matt Runo, who came to us also in two thousand and three, but he served in another community. He has just under twenty-five years of law enforcement experience. That experience came into our Patrol Division early on as he's making an impact. He became a member of our SWAT team, our emergency response team. He also got involved in some other things in the department, one of which was he became a school resource officer for our youth in our schools, where he served over the last decade. He's an award recipient of our Hit It Hard Award, where he's shown dedication, and the supervisor gave him that award for his hard work and dedication. Matt, for your twenty-five years, thank you for your dedication, service and protection of this community. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much for the hard work you do for our community and make it one of the safest communities, if not in the state, and probably the country. Thank you very much.
Quickly, Chief, did I also see somewhere on Facebook this week that Steve Pickett Ticket has retired?
We kept that quiet. We didn't want our community to know.
I just wondered who was taking his place.
Now, Pete, they know.
Anybody on Facebook knows. I hit like and send that out everywhere, so.
He, uh, he went on, he took a job as a bailiff. It was time for him. He had twenty-nine years of service to the department.
Not taking anything away from the two officers tonight at all. Always been a great friend and a great person in departments. I wish him well.
I will, and the rest of the department, just so everybody knows, is having to write more tickets just because Steve left.
I won't mill him. He's one of the few officers that all three of my children met. We have no proclamations, no presentations. Council Committee reports, Finance Committee did not meet, Rules Committee, there's no report there. We also, no public comment was sent to us prior to the council meeting, just reporting that there. Health Department report is actually attached to the agenda. Item to Council Business, item seven A, twenty-twenty-three selection of council leadership and the appointments to the non-standing committees.
Make a motion to approve.
Do I motion? I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I have a couple of questions, please. Could you, Selena, as the Chair of the Rules Committee, that is responsible for the recommendations, for the appointments that we see in front of us, can you just kind of walk us through the process or kind of the evaluation the Rules Committee had, so that the rest of us understand how these names got in front of us?
Okay, so many of these committee members, their terms, when they expire, the administration reaches out to that individual to see if they're interested in serving another term. Typically, in the past, we have always allowed people to redo their term. And what this allows us to do, it allows us to develop community leaders. We had one leader of the BZA and Plan Commission, who was there for thirty years, who passed away last year, and Butch was a tremendous asset to our community. A lot of people are not able to dedicate that much time, whether it's they're moving, whether it's, you know, kid activities or whatever. People typically serve a few terms, and then they may roll off the committee, but that's not something that we in the past, because we want to develop those community leaders. With the slate of candidates that were put before us this year, all of them wanted to renew their terms, and the Rules Committee voted to make a recommendation to approve this slate of candidates.
Thank you. Will you share with us a little bit more? And we just received this this morning, so I don't know all these individuals, and we're responsible for voting on their appointments, so can you just share a little bit more, if you please, about, these are all renewals? Every one on this list to be recommended for appointment is a renewal. Is that correct?
Not everyone.
Okay.
There was a vacancy on the River Place PUD Committee, which has not met in about ten years. So, we did reassign, we did assign someone to fill that vacancy, not sure that they'll be meeting. And we're going to be doing an evaluation of the committees in order to be determining, you know, is that one that we have to statutorily have, or if it's one that we can possibly dissolve? I know that, I had a conversation with Mr. Grisel regarding that issue, and that's something that we will be looking into. As for the other candidates, they were on, most of them are renewals.
So, all of them but that one is a renewal?
Correct.
Correct. And the folks that are on this list that have served in the past, I understand they were asked to serve again, right? Like, we all have their permission that they want to continue to serve. Were their performances reviewed in any way, or considered to be sure that they were fully engaged, and these were activated individuals on each committee?
With committees, I know, it's been a while back, but I know when I was on Plan Commission a while back, we did have an individual who wasn't coming to Plan Commission. I did bring it to staff's attention. Had a conversation with that individual. Usually when there's a performance issue or attendance issue on the committee, I feel confident that the administration is watching that, and if there is, those terms will not be renewed.
So, they were eval, they were evaluated or they were not?
There was no formal evaluation. Is there an issue with their performance? I would say no.
Because they were evaluated? Forgive me for putting a fine point on it. I just want to understand, you know, this is important to me. Just want to understand the process that the Rules Committee went through.
There is no formal evaluation. Did we hear any, I want to say complaints, about the performance of these individuals from the administration, of them not performing their duties while serving on that committee? We did not have any complaints received from the administration regarding that.
Chris, that's correct. That's correct. And one last question, and that is therefore, no citizen that applied for service on these boards and commissions were considered for any open seats? They were not considered?
I would say we did not have really any open seats, other than one vacant seat, which there was an individual that was contacted about being put into that vacant seat.
Okay, so my interpretation of that is just citizens that do not, have not served in the past, are really not considered for new spots. They're just renewed. And then, my follow-up question to that is the citizens, and there are dozens, who do apply to participate in boards and commissions, how are they communicated with when their application is received?
When their application is received, that is put in through the...
The online system.
Through the online system. Chris, can you help me out here? Is there any kind of notification or Ashley about, you know, if they're sending any type of notification after that application is sent in?
Yeah, once the individual submits their application, they receive an automatic notification that that was received. They also receive an email notification, and that email notification is also replicated to individuals within our organization based on the committee that's in question.
Okay, so there are notifications sent out regarding this. And as far as those that have put in applications online, since those notifications are sent out, when there are vacancies, though we did not have any but one this time, those applications are considered. Is that correct?
Correct. So, in the messaging that those individuals receive is that when there is a vacancy for a certain border commission, they will be notified when that opportunity arises. So, it's kind of just like having a resume on file.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just make one last comment. For me, I still have disappointment of the openness of these appointments. I think in two regards. One is I want to be sure that citizens are welcomed to participate in boards and commissions, and furthermore, nothing against these individuals on this list, who I'm sure have served well in the past, but that they are also evaluated fully, and ensuring that we are representing the diversity and the breadth of our community, also allowing new individuals to serve their city in this way. That is what the website says, and I want to be sure that we are fulfilling what the website says, which is basically, it is a great way for citizens to get involved with their local community. But if the door is closed to them, then that's not really fulfilling that, the spirit of that openness. So, for me, again, I'm very disappointed of the process, and I wish it was more open and inclusive to citizens to participate. Thank you.
I'm sorry that you feel that it's closed. I happen to feel that it's open, given the applications are considered, as Ashley stated, for open positions.
I've got a motion on the floor, and I've got a second. Only thing I'll add to this conversation is the Rules Committee met this morning. It was unanimous vote on these, on these committees. And so, at this point, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
Nay.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. Is the consent agenda, do I have the motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Pete, second by Cecilia. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Moving on, next item on the agenda, Budget and Financial, Request to through resolution to appropriate additional funds.
Thank you. For the record, Lisa Bradford, City Controller. The item before you relates to the twenty-twenty-three budget. This item contemplates a potential additional appropriation from the General Fund. What this money will be used for is to undergo a scoping and design agreement for preliminary design for a community center. A few years ago, probably two now, we had a community survey about what residents were looking for. A community center came up very highly, and so the use of these funds will allow us to explore and determine what viability there is and what kind of design we need. So, we have adequate general fund cash balance, as we've talked about, reserves well in excess of our policy. And so, in the future, if it comes to fruition that there is the community center and a bond is taken out, we can reimburse ourselves for these expenditures and put that money back into the general fund and end up in a net zero position with these expenditures. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
This does require a public hearing.
Sure. Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Pete, second by Selena. At this time, I'll open up for public comment. Anybody wishing to come forward, please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to speak.
Good evening. Michael Colby, seven-one-zero-five Cold Lake Drive here in Fishers. Is the survey or assessment that was done to support the development of this building available to the citizens, online or otherwise?
Yes.
Yes, it's on the, we have it available on our website. There's a community center page.
So, there's a separate page for community center? Okay, thank you.
Anybody else wishing to come forward at this point? At this point, I'll close the public hearing. I've got a motion, I've got a second. Any questions or comments by Council? I've, go ahead.
I have a few questions. The one-point-eight million comes out of cash reserves, and then will be, Lisa, will be paid back. Can you just walk us through that a little bit? Paid out through cash reserves immediately?
Well, as the design and the process goes through, but yes, so over the life of whatever design schedule we're looking at, yes.
And then, when the project is like trigger, like...
When we, if we would go to issue a bond for it, it is included in that bond amount, and then it's just a disbursement request from the bond proceeds that goes back to the general fund.
So, it replenishes our cash reserve?
Yes.
But can you tell me more about like the timing of that, like?
I think our hope would be that we would present a full proposal to this council, vision and economics over the next thirty to sixty days.
Great.
And if that, if Council so chooses to move forward, we would issue the permanent financing and then replenish the cash reserves in that timeframe. But this money allows us to finish up the design, so we can give you guys a true picture of what the economics around this project are.
Two more questions, if you please. How much has been invested in the project thus far?
I, to my knowledge, am not aware...
It's around one-point-eight million, isn't it, Elliot?
Yeah, like...
One-point-eight has already been expended?
Um, I...
That's correct.
Yeah, it's expended, yes.
Okay, and that additional one-point-eight is...
No, it's not, it's... It's a one-point-eight million.
Yeah, it's just one-point-eight. I was saying, in myself, things I've actually paid out. I have not seen any significant, anything paid out significantly for it. So, I'm, if there is anything, it'd be like minor survey costs, or you know, like a couple thousand dollars, not to this, this is for.
So, we, we received like a little sneak preview of some scoping out and design and cool like renderings. Is this cash, one-point-eight coming out of cash reserves to pay for like work that has already been done, or is this like...
It's for the full scope and design, so it encapsulates what you saw, that image, that design, that layout, the cost associated with it. It's all of that, and we believe it's enough to get us to where we can say to you with full confidence, this is the cost of the project.
Okay, and I guess that begs the question then, if the project does not go forward, the one-point-eight is expended? Like, that has been...
That's the cost of our due diligence to decide whether or not we want to move forward with the project.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for walking me through all that. I understand it now. Thank you.
Other questions? I do have one question. The amount that's already been expended, will we use the bond proceeds to reimburse us for that as well?
That's the intent.
Yeah.
Okay, so the million-eighth has been spent so far, plus what we're appropriating tonight. Everything goes well.
That's it, the same.
There is no additional.
Okay, just making sure.
Yep.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any other questions? Alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Eyes have it. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next item, item ten, zero-one-one-seven-two-three, ordinance amending the ordinance number oh-five-two-one-oh-nine-H with respect to City of Fishers, Indiana Taxicomic Development Revenue Bond Anticipation Notes.
Thank you. For the record, Lisa Bradford, City Controller. The item before you relates to bond anticipation notes for the north side of the Hundred-and-sixteenth Street project. So, this is the residential side, opposite First Internet Bank. So, back in two thousand and nineteen, we took out bans on this and had a two-year period with options to roll. And so, we are coming up on the expiration period for our bans and are going to roll them for another year period. The reason for rolling the bans one more year is these properties are paid with tax increment financing from this area, and we've got a partial assessment, but not a full assessment of those properties. So, by rolling it a year, we allow ourselves to capture the full growth and the full increment. However, the ordinance that was done back in two thousand and nineteen puts a rate in there for max interest rate for the bans and the bonds, and so for the ban, it's four percent, which back in two thousand and nineteen was an astronomical number for a ban. However, as the interest market has changed substantially, that is no longer potentially, you know, out of the realm number. So, what we are hoping to do is amend this ordinance, and this will allow us the ability to sell these bonds without that cap on it, and essentially give us a better selling opportunity. So, that's why the amendment is before you tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
Just to add some additional clarity, and Lisa did a great job, but that, that date of coming due for the ruling of the ban is on February first, so that's why we're asking of a suspension of rules for you today. Also, with increasing the max rate, as Lisa mentioned, we're still hopeful that we're going to be able to sell the second ban at or below four percent, but the marketability of it right now is not there because of the cap and where the interest rate has gone over the last year. So, that's the purpose of this amendment.
Lisa, could you define ban?
Oh, sorry. Bond anticipation note. So, this is kind of a temporary financing, and it allows you to do a project specifically, a lot of times when you are building a, let's say, a building that's going to take a two- or three-year period, this allows you to wait until that building is fully up and assessed and generating property tax or increment, which helps pay the debt service on it.
And is this something that we can anticipate happening again?
No, this is very rare, and all the time I've been here, this has never happened. So, what's interesting for, this is one of our few bond ordinances, where for some reason, the interest rate for the bond and the interest rate for the ban were different. I, the bond interest rate is six percent, but the ban was four for some reason back in two thousand and nineteen. None of our working group is quite sure what exactly precipitated us to have two different interest rates, but that was discovered as we went to work on rolling those this year.
I think it's genuinely a sign of the times. In two thousand and nineteen, short-term money, bond anticipation notes for a year, you could get under one percent.
Yeah.
And so, the idea that it would ever be four percent, they thought, oh, you'd be safe there.
You're good, yeah.
And now, it's just, we're at a time where even short-term money is, we still think we can get under four, but we can't guarantee when we go to the market, so we've had to adjust this. And I'm not saying there wouldn't be maybe one or two other bonds in that timeframe where we would have not imagined that outcome, but to Lisa's point, it's an anomaly here where one was four and one was six.
Yeah.
Any new issuance that we would do would obviously contemplate and reflect kind of the current bond market that we find ourselves in.
Okay, that sounds good. And this has to happen tonight, doesn't it?
Yes, yes, ideally.
Lisa, just to clarify, the bans itself, it's interest-only, correct?
Yes, the ban is interest-only.
Interest-only, and we're doing this to get better pricing in the marketplace?
We're doing this to get better pricing in the marketplace. We're amending to get better pricing in the marketplace, and we're rolling the ban one more year to get the property fully assessed. It's about fifty percent assessed right now.
Any questions? I'll motion, make a motion to suspend.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rule.
Do I have a second? I have a motion by Pete and a second by Todd. Alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Pete, second by Todd. Alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Go get them. Get that good market. Moving on to item eleven?
Those bonds are going to listen to the...
No, they're not.
Council meeting tonight.
No. Item zero-one-one-seven-two-three, an ordinance amending chapter thirty of the Fisher's Code of Ordinances. First reading.
Thank you, Council President Weingart, members of the council for the record, Chris Grisel, City Attorney. As you're all aware, last month, we had a robust conversation about nonprofit funding about, from this council, and we promised that we'd bring some finality and resolution to that conversation by proposing an amendment via the legislative process to be debated and voted upon by this council body. So, with that, this amendment before you simply removes the nonprofit committee as a standing committee of the City Council. Tonight's a first reading, and we anticipate a full discussion, look forward to direction from the City Council. So, with that, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions or comments from Council?
I have a question. So, what happens to all the grants, then?
So, I think that would be a conversation for this council to have. I mean, if the committee is removed, I think you have a twenty-twenty-three conversation to have about money that was budgeted, and then going forward, you have a conversation to have, obviously, if the money's removed, it won't be part of the budget process.
One point of clarification, I said this last time, and I'll say it again. I'm indifferent as to what all of you do in this regard. If it, if it were to be eliminated, what would happen is during the twenty-twenty-four budget process, as the mayor's role is to present a budget to you, I would present a budget that would contemplate whatever nonprofit programs we were going to do, or if we were going to give any money at all. And then you guys can vote it up or down, one way or another, whether you agree with it. I think that would be the contemplation here, because obviously, you guys are the fiscal body. If you want to appropriate funds, that's your discretion during the budget process, and we would have that discussion then. That's one way to approach this moving forward. But again, I'm indifferent as to what the council's purview is. We'll support it either way.
As I'd mentioned last month, I think we should keep it, control the council. The council does the budget, as the mayor said. With nine of us living in different parts of the city, we're exposed to different nonprofits. One, Dave on his side, I may not even know what he's talking about for his nonprofit. He may not know one in my area. So, I think it's important that we, as the City Council, cover the entire city for nonprofits. Just on a personal note, when I was mayor, I believed in the nonprofits and did everything I could to help every nonprofit that we could to become successful. It's just a personal thing with me to help those that are helping others in our city. Yes, we want to keep the money in Fishers. We don't want to give money to a nonprofit in Annapolis. And I think we've done, I was on that committee for a couple of years. I haven't been the last few years. But I think we should keep the nonprofit committee and continue with what we're doing.
Other comments?
I do. There was, we had an abbreviated conversation last month. It was at the very end of our work session, so it was kind of abbreviated. There were some comments that came up at that time about how it seems, forgive me, inappropriate. inappropriate for the municipality to grant out to nonprofits. Um, I'm not sure if inappropriate's the correct word, but that there was a concern there, if that was a good practice. So I would like to ask especially you, Chris, as a city attorney, first of all, I just want to resolve that concern. Are there any, I don't know, legal concerns or anything that we should be aware of as a fiscal body about granting out to nonprofits, which we've done for several years?
I think that's more a public policy debate than it is a legal debate.
Okay, so there's no, and from uh your perspective, there's no legal concern about that at all?
No, I think I would have brought that to the attention of the council.
I I would have thought so, okay. So uh therefore, if um if the issue, for me, if the issue is should this body, should our municipality help nonprofits, help our citizens, that's the issue at hand. Um, changing the the um the organi- or the committee that is responsible for making those decisions is kind of a sideline topic. The issue that we need to decide as the fiscal body is if we're committed to helping the nonprofits, the local nonprofits who help our local citizens, and I will say from my perspective, I am fully for that, that is important.
Well, the only thing I'll add to this is, you know, we are the fiscal body, we can make that decision, what we want to do financially in our community every year during the budget process, so I guess I'm not concerned about, you know, we we will be doing something charity, I would believe, as part of our budget process. However, that mechanism for how we allocate that out to the various charitable organizations may be changed. So uh that's why we're starting this conversation tonight, having first reading only tonight and we'll continue this conversation as well, Liam, here's, just want to give you my perspective.
Can you, uh just, can I ask you a follow-up, like what is the objective? I think I'm maybe a little confused about what we're trying to accomplish with this conversation.
I think one of the things that have been, were brought up over the past year that I kept receiving feedback from fellow council members and also, quite frankly, my own experience uh going down this path. Um, I think it's outstanding, like every one of us have a heart for something, right? I mean, there's, so there's no, there's no question about that, that's not, I don't think that's, anybody's calling into question any of it in this conversation. The problem lies in two things, number one, in my estimation, that I just want to work through, right, with everybody, is I did, when I was serving on a nonprofit um that was receiving money from uh Fishers, I watched how hard I had to struggle to get our director to actually go get sponsorships instead of going, well, at least we have this money coming from Fishers, from the government. And so that frustrated me because it was like, yes, that's a great thing, it's a blessing, it's something, you know, but don't look at that as, and so I felt like there was a reliance on the municipality to then support that. That was one, and that was a one case, right, that's not speaking to anybody else, that was one situation and it's not even reflective of that, of that particular organization at this point. But that was something I encountered. Secondly, this topic has created more division than ever needs to be. And and what I get concerned with is because the passions run deep and run strong with this, that we become divided, then as the decisions are made, it it seems to be communicated that that is a political decision instead of a humanitarian decision. And so my concern with it is, you know, nonprofit committee and and the the inner workings with that on a comp, uh in addition to each one of us having to vote on this, I'm not trying to choose between one good thing and another, that's not the point. Unfortunately, we get branded that way, where I received comments that said, it's obvious Fishers doesn't care about this and I'm not going to name the organization. That is farthest from the truth. And so I believe it's very, it's, we need to be very cautious, as much as we want to do for others, we need to be very cautious in the process that we take and the way that it's coming across because that is how it was translated to some individuals and some organizations. So I hope you take me the right way with that, that I'm I'm more for putting it into the mayor's hands and for us all nine to have feedback to the mayor's office, say, hey, this, you know, meet with the mayor and say, hey, this is what we found, this is somebody in the community and let that be driven by the city. I'm fine with whatever we end up with, I'm just saying, those are the concerns that I have and that's one of the reasons of why this is on the agenda right now.
Thank you.
I hope that helps.
It does.
Okay.
My thoughts are that uh we all have our passions, our causes, uh organizations that we we support and I think by uh dissolving the non-for-profit committee, we take the the politics out of it because it it is, at the end of the day, taxpayer money and as a city this size, we have a lot of needs and challenges and initiatives that we want to roll out to help our own citizens. So I I really believe that we should really evaluate if we have money year to year to appropriate extra money, to just evaluate and have conversations with the city staff and the mayor and say, what are some challenges facing our community right now? What what are some um groups that that need support? Or what initiatives, or it could be a special project initiative, equipment, or something that will stay within our community and 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 that money will will make a greater impact and it will stay within our city limits. And so I I just feel like we we need to look at another way of of uh trying to um support our community and and help our our citizens.
Other comments?
Yep.
Need to move this along?
I'm, I've been a not for, not-for-profit committee since its inception. And I I think what we have tried to do is we tried to do a very good thing in the city, there was a, there certainly was a uh monies that were given over and out for profits for years and years, even back when we were a town, uh to those organizations who were substantively and impactfully giving back to the community. And and that was done by the council at that point because the council was the executive in the legislative body. You know, came to a point where we decided to try to do this not-for-profit committee thing and it it in the beginning, I suppose it was founded on on good measure. Uh, I think it's gotten completely out of control and it's gotten completely political. And I can tell you, as a part-time legislator, I have a full-time job. I don't field calls from every single not-for-profit committee that's out there in the city. I I'm not going to claim to know any and all of them. I I do know the ones that make a major impact here and I have a soft heart for everyone. I I'm also a a giver to not-for-profits myself. I write checks out of my own personal monies each and every year to not-for-profits. Why? Because I choose to, because that's my money that I can do with what I want. I'm going to go back on the stance and I am wholeheartedly for getting rid of this not-for-profit committee and throwing it back on the mayor, where then he would have to present it to a budget to us and we'll still get a chance to approve it, still get a chance to decide whether or not decisions he wants or she wants to make, whoever the mayor happens to be at that point in time, still has to come before this body. But nowhere in the Constitution of the United States of America, nowhere in the Constitution of the state of Indiana and nowhere in the laws and ordinances of the city of Fishers, Indiana, does it say, we as a council can give away people's tax dollars to not-for-profits. And and I'm going to stand on that. It it has created way too much strife, I've gotten a bunch of backlash like Todd's, I'm on, I've gotten some of the same calls that Todd has too, and they're hate phone calls, I'm like, you've got to be kidding me that I'm getting these phone calls right now. And that's where I just knew it turned political and I I want done with it because what we're trying to do is very non-political in that. But anybody's that if we choose to dissolve this group, that that the mayor, Scott at this point in time, uh wants to bring forth in that budget, I I'll review my own personal beliefs and I'll vote it up or down. And I have that choice as a council member in the entire budget. But I I do not believe this is the correct form uh to do it in this not-for-profit committee because it's really trying to call out individual members and and try to make you look bad and and I'm tired of doing that when we're trying to do something good. So I'm a hundred percent in favor of dissolving that committee.
Anybody else?
I really can't say that, I have much more to add other than what has been add. I don't want to sit here and repeat what Pete and what Todd and Cecilia have said, but I agree with them. And I am all for pushing the, dissolving the nonprofit committee and letting the administration um determine nonprofit giving within the community and I will direct nonprofits to the appropriate manner, uh member of the administration for their visibility in regards to those funds.
One thing I'll mention is that I'm in favor of having the nonprofit committees. I don't see a really good reason for dissolving them, I'm not hearing anything about it being uh turning political or anything like that. Um, so I I'm not sure where these comments are coming from, to be honest. But in addition, I, as I mentioned in the last council meeting, if we offer financial incentives for for-profits, we should do that for non-for-profits as well. But in addition to that, the whole point of the committee is to offer recommendations, just like any other committee um within within the city.
You know, um, when I was with the township, we we gave money to some nonprofits. Uh, the township is like a safety net for people who get in trouble and they would uh evaluate the non-pro, and it was Debbie Driscoll, the trustee, who who made that decision and the board members approved the budget and and I thought that worked really well for us. But she she was uh more in tune with the daily operations and and can see what the community needed and um and and it really worked for the township, so so I think we could try something different. Um, you know, I have full confidence in the administration that they could um kind of lead us down a path and and vote on it in a, in an annual budget.
Thank you, everybody, well, ladies and gentlemen, we certainly have some differing opinions here, but that's what uh the council's all about and we will, we've had first reading and we'll continue to have discussions and come to some conclusion. Thank you all very much for your input.
John, I think there's three or maybe three or four items on here, which are all voluntary annexations. I would move that I don't necessarily require staff to report on a voluntary annexation.
All right. Item twelve, R zero one one seven two three B, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Pete, a second by Selena, alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So, I'm sorry, so we're not going to have a discussion about any, I'm not, I'm not clear about what.
These are voluntary annexations.
Yeah.
And these individuals are voluntary annexing into the city.
Right.
Do you have questions on it?
Is there a question about it?
Well, um, I just, before we fly through them, um, are we just, um, did, I'm sorry, I missed Pete's comment, I think. So we're not going to have um any type of conversation about any of them, they're all final reading, we'll just buzz through them.
Again, is it really to an annexation, Jocelyn, all we're doing is we're accepting them into the city. We're not, we're not suggesting that you're approving any plan that's going to go on top of there, you're not suggesting.
I'm I'm aware, I'm aware.
So really, all you're saying is, is you want to voluntary annex of, you're into the town, we're like, thumbs up, that's all you're trying to say. And and there's a reason not to voluntarily annex themselves into the city? So, I mean, I don't, sure, you, I, you have the right to make a comment, I'm just not really sure what comments are applicable on a voluntary annexation.
Um, well, I just wanted to make sure we're giving due consideration to each thing and not just buzzing through. So forgive me, I was a bit behind there.
We have to do it one at a time.
Okay, okay, yes, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, move on to our next voluntary annexation, item thirteen.
Did we have a vote on twelve?
No, we didn't have.
All right, getting ahead of myself here, alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Move on to item thirteen, request of a voluntary annexation of five acres known as River Ridge.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Motion by Pete, second by Todd, alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, thank you. Toll property annexation, item fourteen, R zero one one seven two three C.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Pete, a second by Todd, alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have item one two one nine two two B.
A motion to approve.
A motion by Pete, second by Todd, alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Eyes, those opposed nay. Eyes have it. Moving on to Mc Dermott Property Annexation, item sixteen, R zero one one seven two three D.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a motion by Pete, do I have a second by Todd, alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to item seventeen.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Pete, do I have a second? Second by Todd, alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Moving on to Ms. Lane, it's item one 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 four two two, consideration of a rezon of forty-one point four acres of planned development. Good evening, Megan.
Yes, good evening.
How are you?
I'm great, thanks for making my job easy tonight.
You're welcome.
Megan Bukasich, uh Director of Planning and Zoning. The item before you is the final reading of a proposed rezon, so you did see this a couple of months ago during first reading. Uh, so this map shows the general location of the property, which is south of one thirty-sixth street and just east of Cynthia Road. Here's a zoomed-in version of that image, so the surrounding land use, uh there's Barrington Estates, Britton Falls, and then Hunter's Run that surround this property. And to the north is a vacant parcel that is currently zoned of, in a PUD that is uh planned for commercial. Here's the current zoning of the property, today it does sit within a PUD and the proposed zoning is also um a a PUD, which is a planned unit development, um but just within its own new PUD. The Fishers twenty forty plan identifies this parcel as a neighborhood service center on a portion of it and then on the southern half um as a state residential. Also, there is an open space overlay that sits um on top of Thorpe Creek that runs through this development. So just a general project overview, um they're requesting a PUD, they are deviating from some of the standards in the Unified Development Ordinance, so it's a reduced lot size, reduced frontage, uh reduced setbacks, and reduced impervious surface area percentage. But in return, we are getting an increased building floor area, increased architecture, increased open space, and then increased tree preservation and all of the landscaping that will be going in will be native. Here is the concept plan. Um, the petitioner is going to highlight some of the changes since first reading, but I do want to mention that the southern portion, this property has been divided into two parcels here, you can see the white dotted line. Um, so the portion that will be developed will be sixty-one homes, single-family for sale. And then the southern portion is going to be dedicated to the city for future parkland. Um, we don't have any plans for what that looks like at this time, it is in a floodplain, so that area is not able to be developed. Uh, there were also private deed restrictions on the property and the petitioner has incorporated those into the PUD ordinance, so that way those are still maintained. Um, and what those deed restrictions state is that really this should not be rezoned for any future development. Um, and so the city having ownership of that will really ensure um that that is maintained. Here are some of the elevations of a development um from the builder, I'm going to let them go through most of this. And then in first, during first reading, we did hear a comment about the rear elevations, just asking that those be enhanced with some additional architectural features. Fischner has accommodated that and they'll, um, there's some imagery that we can, which can show you for what that will look like. There were several neighborhood meetings that were held, so the developer met with Britton Falls, Barrington Estates, and Hunter's Run. And then we did hold a public hearing on January fourth and uh Plan Commission, no uh public comments were heard, but there was a unanimous favorable recommendation from Plan Commission. And I do want to commend the developer and their team um for, through the whole process, they've been great to work with and they've really engaged the surrounding neighborhoods um through the entire process. So we do recommend approval and then I'll invite Rick Lawrence with Nelson and Frankenberger to also speak a little bit on this development. Your imagery through here from Plan Commission.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Rick Lawrence, I'm an attorney with Nelson and Frankenberger in Carmel, Indiana. With me tonight is Jesse Pullman with William Trace and also Todd Pyatt and Paul Claire with um Pyatt Home Builders. They're the um preferred and identified builder of the properties in this location. I'll just spend a few minutes to go over the changes since this was in front of you in December. Uh, Megan did a really good job of kind of outlining where we are at this point in time. This is the site, as you guys well know, surrounded by Barrington Estates, Britton Falls, and Hunter's Run. We did have um outreach to the board of Bri- um Barrington Estates. Um, Counselor DeReemer had uh worked with us to get a meeting with the residents of Britton Falls and then Hun- Hunter's Run, we did a Zoom-type meeting and opened it up for questions from that neighborhood. So we tried to take into account comments we heard from members that we talked to, um counselors, yourselves, um the staff, and then neighborhood comments as we progressed through this process. This is the site plan, as Megan had shown you, um really before, the the changes that have. Really, before, the, the changes that have happened are probably threefold. One, um, instead of having an open-ended discussion about the property that's not the 61 homes, we have, um, committed to dedicating that property to the city, to be part of the greenway. It's about 25 acres. Roughly 60-ish percent of the property is gonna be dedicated for free of charge to the city as this project moves forward. And then the city, obviously, will take whatever action they think in the future to, um, use that area for the citizens. One of the other, um, items we had heard, and this has been, um, taken care of in the PUD, there were some concerns about the garage doors and making sure that they were, um, sufficient enough to convey the, the type of architecture and the, um, decorative enough. Thank you. Um, and we've, in Exhibit D to the PUD, we have examples of the decorative nature of the garage doors, and there's language in the PUD to address that. The other item was to add, uh, other decorative elements to the rear of the homes. The slide on the screen now are the rear of the homes. While they are very well, um, proportioned, and they do look, to some extent, like the fronts of homes, there was some concern when the garages are in the back, um, of the buildings of these homes, that there was, um, some too much, um, hardy plank. So, we've committed to adding windows in those areas to break up that area. The other item that's come up in discussions with staff and also a couple counselors was the setbacks, the area between the homes. We have intentionally designed this property to look a certain way from the streetscape, which is what has led to how these homes are, uh, proportioned on the, the lots and how they're set there. What we wanted to highlight was, when homes are against each other, not garages against driveways, but when homes are against each other, there's a 10-foot separation between the, the structure of that building. And we've taken additional efforts to alleviate some of the concerns that have come up in talking to people regarding, um, how the, the, um, areas between the homes, um, exist, including reducing the, um, sprinkler heads in that area, so we're losing moisture. There's also masonry and hardy plank, which then resists mildew. Some of the other homes in the area, we understand, have had this issue, but they've also been vinyl siding, which is more prone to mildew issues. So, we've also tried to, um, level the ground so that there's drainage into the back area, and then drain off of the rear of the buildings into the formal, um, drainage for the entire neighborhood. So, we've tried to do what we can to maintain both look and aesthetics of the neighborhood, but then also address, the best we can, some concerns and questions we've had regarding the side yard setbacks and distance between the homes. So, with that, I'd open it up to any questions you guys might have. We do appreciate almost all of you taking the time to meet with us before we even filed. We appreciated your comments. We appreciate working with staff. And again, we just wanna thank all of you for the time you've put in.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the petitioner?
Rick, the, um, I didn't hear you say about the drain tile between the houses that you committed to me to.
Yes. Yeah. Yes, it's in the ordinance too.
Okay. And that's, that's in the, okay. And then the, um, uh, roof overhangs will stay within a lot and not in an easement?
The, I think we have it in the ordinance. There might be a hangover of a foot, um, if I recall correctly. Is that correct, Jesse? It won't hit over in the lot line, but it might overhang the 10-foot-
Yeah, I understand that.
Setbacks.
But the agreement was that they would not go over the lot line.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions?
For Brad, um, just, could you share with us, um, first of all, thank you. You were very engaging and responsive to neighbors, Brad, um, neighbors' feedback. They had a lot of it. Do you feel like they are, they've been hurt?
I would say overall, besides the request that they want a grocery store there.
Fair enough.
Okay. I, I would, I would say that, um, they were not against it. Uh, you guys be honest with, 'cause I, I don't wanna represent 2,000 people, but compared to other things, other developments, uh, I would say they were very open to it. It's different. Uh, the main concern they had, could you go to the slide with, um, the, right, thank you, right there. Probably the main concern was that south, uh, whatever is a 10 acres, those homes that you see there were smart enough back in 2006 to go to that lady who owned the ground back then and got the land rezoned to R2 with restrictions. And that's part of the deed restrictions that are in part of the PUD, right, Megan?
Yes, we incorporated that.
Yeah, 'cause those people are very, very concerned. In fact, we had some BOD meetings where, yes, um, besides those meetings, so that was probably the number one concern, that those landowners are protected. They are protecting it. In fact, they were nice enough to offer the ground to Britton Falls first, before the city. Uh, but our Board of Directors was too slow to react, and the mayor was quicker. But that was the biggest concern, and is in there, to protect those 11 homes along the south edge. Um, and besides that, uh, they finally are understanding they're not gonna get a grocery store. Uh, they're not filling that whole 40 acres up with houses. So, I would say Britton Falls is okay with it.
That's good to know.
Thanks for asking.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, can I ask you one other question, just more out of curiosity, especially as we segue to, oh, I think it's item 21 here. Um, you've been very responsive to feedback. Has some of the feedback, which you've accepted and woven into the overall plan, um, has, has those, um, suggestions that you've adopted actually increased the cost to you?
I don't know meaningfully if it has. I don't know that we've looked at it honestly. There was a pro forma that kind of started with it, and I don't know that we've deviated significantly from that.
Okay. I'm, I'm happy to know that. Thank you. Thank you. And again, thank you for your just listening and openness and responsiveness. Good to know. Thanks.
I'll, I'll make a, a quick comment. First of all, it's unanimously approved by Plan and Commission, and, and I certainly appreciate all the work that's done, and Brad with, with Del Webb and all those folks, and looking at the, the lot plan itself. I mean, I, I don't know that you can imagine doing a project in a better portion of that lot and protecting all the homes around that property. I mean, it was excellently done. I think the product is very much different than what we've seen here in Fisher's with what they call zipper homes. And that's what he was alluding to in the slide, which is one after that, I think. Yeah, you can see how they kinda line up in a zipper fashion there. And, and it really kinda maximizes the, the use of the house, maximizes the use of land. It, it becomes very expensive here to, to build a house in Fisher's, and we know it, due to the things that, that, that we put on them for, for standards. The thing which I'll tell you, Megan and her team did an absolutely fabulous job in, in taking our comments and kinda pushing back on the developer to make sure that, you know, some of the stuff we were giving away, we were getting things in return. Right? Um, a lot of comments go back that we just kinda bow over to developers. That's, that's absolutely not accurate whatsoever. You know, we, we push back on these guys to give us product that we feel is in the fit and finish of what we believe Fisher should be. And, and it's been very accommodating. I, I think it's been, uh, very well handled by the developer, and, and certainly, you know, I, I believe it does co- come at more cost, but I don't think it's a huge cost either. I think that the elements that you guys are bringing in there are just gonna allow you guys to basically sell the homes for more money, and they're gonna look aesthetically better overall, not only in, when you build them, but in the future. And that's a big thing for us. Do they withstand the test of time? And I think this, this project will. And again, that whole greenway belt around there is just a fabulous add to that whole particular area over there. And if no one else has a comment, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
I've got a, I got a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, motion by Pete, a second by Selena. Since there's no other discussion or questions, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Looking forward to have you a part of Fisher's community.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 19, consideration of a text amendment. Yes? Thank you. Moving on to item 19, 121922E, consideration of a text amendment to the UDO for variance cleanup items.
Yes, so this is another read, uh, final reading, and this is for, uh, UDO text amendment. So, our staff went through and, uh, identified some errors in our UDO over the last year. And so, we were just bringing forward an annual update, um, to that ordinance.
Any questions?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve that, John.
I have a motion. Motion by Pete, a second by Todd. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Ayes have it. Moving on to item 20, another-
Voluntary annexation, motion to approve.
That's a first reading in a public hearing.
Oh, sorry.
So, uh, request to approve a voluntary annexation of eight acres known as The Wood Property. We're ready.
Gotcha. Sorry, I was waiting for the public hearing. Not used to presenting annexations anymore. Uh, so this is for a voluntary annexation, uh, for a property, I believe it's 20 acres, off of Cumberland Road, south of 116th Street. Uh, they're just voluntarily annexing into the city, um, because they wanna be a part of city limits.
Thank you, Megan. Uh, this-
I'll give it a first reading.
Well, we're gonna have a public hearing first.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. We'll open up for a public hearing. Anybody wishing to come forward, just please state your name for the record? Since no one's coming forward, we'll close the public hearing.
Now, I'll give it a first reading.
And we've got first reading. Thank you, Megan. Moving on to item 21, 01172B, update of Fisher's 2040 Housing and Neighbors, add a recommendation from the 22 Housing Study.
Yes. So, this is for first reading for a text amendment to the Fisher's 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Um, so last month, we had a discussion, um, about the recommendations from the housing study. And so, this is us bringing forward those recommendations from urban partners to incorporate that into our, into the action items of our Housing and Neighborhoods chapter. So, the ordinance that was included on the agenda included a redlined, uh, action item list that showed the additional actions, um, that we wanted to include in there. And so, uh, this is just for first reading. I'm happy to take any feedback that you all have. Um, really, we were just incorporating the recommendations from the Housing Task Force and consultant.
Thank you, Megan. Megan, any questions?
I do. Um, Megan, I love this, um, document that was attached to the agenda. It showed, it was really helpful to show, like, exactly the recommendations that came out of the housing pla- um, recommendations, and how they would be presented in the 2040 Plan. So, I appreciate your time, or your staff's time, to put that together. It was very helpful for me. I just had one question on it. Um, and, uh, under the young adults component, one of the recommendations was to examine and modify current zoning. This, um, stuck out to me because the state has also had a, like, statewide, um, housing task force. And this was a recommendation that rose to the top for them as well. So, I've seen that before. Examine and modify current zoning. I did not see it reflected in the recommendations for the 2040 Plan specifically. So, I just wanted to flag that and get your feedback on that.
And the action, the wording of the action item that is in line with that row, what it, what's the wording of that? 'Cause it could have just been-
Well, that's, I mean, uh, thank you. So, let me read it real quick, and then you can help clarify. And let me put on my glasses, sir. Um, what is recommended in the 2040 Plan, and again, this is in the young, young adults category, integrate a variety of housing, including affordable, senior living, apartments, and single-family housing into redevelopment and infill development sites to enrich, enrich the diversity of housing choices within a given neighborhood. And again, the specific recommendation here, and again, from the state, says specifically, examine and modify current zoning. So, I'm, I know I'm kind of like getting into the weeds here, but, um, I just wanted to flag that.
Yeah. It wasn't intentional to, that, that wording. I think, uh, we can certainly get that added in, if that's a recommendation of the council.
It's not like you're opposed to looking at zoning.
No, I think we just thought that that already got the gist of it.
Yeah.
And so, but we're happy to include that language in there.
Okay. Um, that's not necessary for me. I just wanted to get your feedback if that was, um, disregarded, or, um, if you are open to that. And I'm not saying I recommend that fully. It's just, it was, um, documented in the plan that we paid for. So, I just wanted to see how it was reflected in the 2040 Plan. I'm very comfortable. I, it's just good to, um, have that little bit of detail from you. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
First reading.
We've had first reading. Any other unfinished or new business?
Oh, I'm sorry. One other thing kinda related to this. I just wanted, the, when we met last, um, there was a gentleman who requested the data from Mayor Fannis, your state of the city, that talked about housing, like the, I think we call it the source data from some of the findings you presented.
Yes.
Um, I'm sure he has not received that yet, and it's been several weeks now.
I think he's re- he's, uh, received a portion of the data, and we're working on getting him the rest, I believe. Is that correct, Chris?
Okay.
So, he's gotten some of the data, but not all of it yet.
Okay. I just wanted to close the circle on that.
Still in the process.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Open up for community comment. Any, anybody wishing to come forward, please state your name for the record?
Hello, Michael Colby, 7105 Cold Lake Drive. I happen to have been on the Allisonville Corridor Committee, and I've had a number of my residents in River Glen have been asking about when that report would become final and available for publication to the citizens.
Yes. Uh, I can tell you a little bit of a rough timeline. Ash, you could share more. We're waiting for a few final design renderings on 116th and Allisonville to release the entire report, but I would think in February, are we shooting for?
Yeah, we're waiting for the committee to be able to understand the final meeting, um, sort of for our public, for the community, um, a little bit longer if we get more useful information.
So, there'll be another meeting of the actual committee to look at the final report?
We, I would think there would be a final release to the, I think that the final release will be in February or early March. And the only thing we're waiting on, Mike, to be honest with you, is some final, uh, graphics to be able to share with the public. So, for instance, what's 116th and Allisonville really gonna look like? And the design team is still just working through that, but we hope to have that soon. 'Cause we think there's a couple key pieces that people are gonna be very interested in, and we wanna be able to give them some real meaningful information when we release that. So, I'm, I'm hopeful late February, early March, we'll have it out to the public, and it'll have some really good information that people can point to and see.
I appreciate that. Uh, and one of the other interests would be the moon surface that's, uh, over on the, uh, uh, northeast side of-
I don't know what you're referring to, Mike. Yeah. Uh, so, we did get, we did get a bit of good information, and I think some of the work that, uh, Jason's doing right now, we had very favorable, uh, resurfacing, uh, bids come in recently, uh, far better than when we thought. So, we're actually going back and relooking at all of our numbers, uh, in our first Barrett Law program, uh, hopefully to get done yet this spring. And then, yes, obviously, your two roads as well. But it, it bodes well, uh, that the costs have, for knock on wood, come down some degree on the road resurfacing side of things.
I appreciate that. That wasn't what I was asking, but now I know that there's some activity on the private roads. But I, what I was referring to was that thing be- to the, to the right of, of Goodwill, and, uh, between that and the Mexican Restaurant, I mean, I call that the moon surface.
Well, we hope to have some more information on that as well. It's also part of the reason we're, uh, holding out for a final-
That's what I thought, because as a committee member, there was a discussion, if this happens on this property, then this would be what we do here. And if it happens over here, yada, yada, yada.
Yeah, our hope is to be able to share with the public some concrete details of a variety of things, both the road project and other economic development.
I appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
So, Mike, I will add to that, that, um, that I've, they have been, there's been people out at 116th Street in Allisonville. I know, what was it, this week or late last week, taking pictures, doing videos, getting things ready for the release? Is that-
That was my community that was out there doing that. No, just kidding.
Yeah. No, there, our intention is to really celebrate this with the community, but we just wanted to make sure we have some real detail to be able to provide them versus kind of cartoon pictures. We wanna show them actually what's going to occur. Hopefully, we'll get that done in short.
Anybody else? Good evening.
Good evening.
And welcome.
Thank you. Um, Jeremy Ferris and Matt Rappert with the Fisher's Rotary Club. One of the initiatives of the incoming president is for us to think about some partnerships that we can do with the city. Probably gonna be pushed over to Jake, but one of the thoughts we're thinking about is helping out with cleanup of the Nickel Plate Trail and possibly partnering, this is an idea that was brought three or four years ago, um, with some of the other surface clubs, to have an area that showcases what we do for the community. We've been here for over 30 years. I'm sure you've all heard of the Rotary Club, um, and stuff that we do. Um, so, we're, we're just trying to come and visit some of these riveting meetings and see what's, see what's going on, and see if there's a fit, not only for us, but hear what's going on, if, if something sparks our interest. But, um, we've, we're really good trash picker-uppers. We've done it for a long time. It used to be on Allisonville, but the member who was there moved. So, we're, we're, we're looking at other, I'm sure, sure we did some comments on this, of where to pick up trash, but, um, that's what we're here for. We have a few, uh- That's what we're here for. We have a few different road trainings that are going to come here in the next few months, I think, and just see if we hear something, and just let you know, that's kind of our thought process. If you guys think of something...
There's no shortage of opportunities, and Jake, I'm sure will have a million. But also, I've talked to a few of your Rotary brothers and sisters about the new arena we're building and the opportunity for you guys also to raise...I know you guys look to raise funds to give for charitable purposes and in trade for some of your hard-earned hours of labor. I think there's an incredible opportunity at the new facility as that gets built, but I'm sure Jake will have a million other options as well, so...
I was a member of Greenfield Rotary for 40 years.
That's right.
And we always picked up trash on I-70, so you could pick up trash on I-69 if you like.
You guys are stronger than us. We like the quiet. The quiet nickel plate, maybe, is our first... Everybody agreed on that area first, but you know what?
It was interesting the trash we picked up.
Yes, great club, by the way.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Gentlemen, thank you for coming tonight, and we really appreciate your willingness to serve. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll close the community comment. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Show moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, we are adjourned. Have a great week.